I'd like to call the Village Board meeting to order, please. If you'd stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone and welcome to everyone watching at home. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll, please.
Trustee Harn, trustee Gett, trustee Dan Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Present.
Trustee Reiker.
Present.
Trustee Carter.
Okay, again, welcome. We would be at item four, approval of the Board of Trustees minutes for Tuesday, April 21st, 2018. I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Pardon?
Second.
Oh, okay.
Wait.
Counsel.
Don't we need four?
Can we have?
You can.
You want us to hold off and approve?
Well, I'm just trying to think if you count.
I thought with myself we had.
Yeah, you know what, because there's six, so yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Should I have called him and roll?
Yep, what's that?
Should I have called him and roll since he's filling in?
You're going to show him present anyway.
Okay.
So go ahead.
All right.
All right, so we do have a second. Any questions or corrections to the minutes? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. So counsel, do you want me to vote then tonight on when we call the roll on issues?
Um, I'm not comfortable with us approving anything substantive. Approving minutes, anybody that's present can vote, so that's okay, but approve, I don't know, do we have anything? Trying to think of.
We have a contract to approve.
Um, I'm not comfortable with that with only three trustees here.
Okay, two have notified us they're not going to attend. We haven't heard from trustee Gett. I hope he'll walk in here soon, so if we do some updates and...
I would say do the updates and let's hope that he makes it.
Okay, so let's go to correspondence then. So madam clerk, if you would read any correspondence?
Yes, I have two letters here. They're both thank you letters. The first one is from Sharon and John Amdell. They are the ones who made the donation to our sculptures that you see. It reads, Mayor Phelan, thank you for your leadership of the Bruce and Gail White visit to Peoria Heights. We especially appreciated how you cleared away obstacles and empowered your team to make the visit a success. Your remarks were absolutely perfect. Thank you, Sharon and John Amdell. The second letter is from Bill Kraft, the event coordinator for T It Up With The Troops. He says, "On behalf of the entire executive committee, thank you for your generous donation of $500 to the 2018 event. With your financial support, over 260 military personnel and veterans were provided a day of golf, breakfast, lunch, and dinner at no cost to them. No goods or services were provided in return for this donation. You should be very proud of the fact that your donation will further be used for the benefit of the various programs that are supported by T It Up For The Troops. Last year, funding was awarded to the Goodwill Industries, Wayne A Downing Shelter for Homeless Vets, Illinois Valley Boulder Center, and Southside Office of Concerned Veteran Programs. 2019 will mark the 11th anniversary of this event, and we look forward to your continued participation. Thank you for your support."
Okay, thank you. We will move on then to announcements. I do want to announce that we have a great Halloween festivities planned, so I'm going to ask Sarah to tell you about those because she's doing all the work.
Yes, so we have a Halloween event scheduled for Saturday, October 27th. The Chamber of Commerce is also going to be involved with this event. We're going to have a 3 o'clock parade for the children. There will be a costume contest involved. From 4 to 6, we are going to have trunk or treat in the village parking lot and a Halloween band providing music in the park. At 6 o'clock, we have Hocus Pocus playing, so we'll have an evening movie, and we're currently working with local businesses to try to get food and, like, drinks provided to this event. So that's kind of where we are, and as long as everything goes smoothly, we'll be promoting this officially by Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
And if you know anyone who wants to participate in trunk or treat, just get ahold of me.
All right, do you have anything else, Sarah?
That's all.
All right. So let's stop there and get into trustee reports. So we'd be at Economic and Community Development. Trustee Mariscal.
I have nothing to report this evening, mayor. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Carter's absent, so chief, do you have anything on the police?
The only thing I would just like to mention is that, just to let the, make the residents aware that we've seen a high volume of solicitors recently in the last month, so we're giving the residents some direction to contact us. Some of these are scams where someone will go to the door, someone else will go to the back door, so while their attention's at the front of the house, they're gaining entry to the back of the house, so we've seen an increase in this. So we just want to make the residents aware that, you know, we don't allow solicitation unless you check in here first so we can identify you, but if you do have someone at your door, please just contact us and we'll do the rest, so just wanted to make the residents aware of that.
Thank you.
When a solicitor comes to the door, should they have, like, a piece of paper or something saying that they've checked in with you?
Yeah, well, we don't give them anything, but we do have a database that we can check, our officers can check to see if they're in. They should come up here, register with us. We do a background check, make sure it's a legitimate business. We will have everything. Most of legitimate businesses will have an ID, but we don't require it as long as you're in our database, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
One more thing, it's kind of trustee Reiker, it's kind of like what we've done with the junkers. We make them register in the Heights first because what we were finding out is they were, it's a good excuse to say, well, we thought it was junk, but it was up by the house, we just took it. So what we do is we register the junkers to make sure, you know, that they, we know who's in our community, so same mindset with the solicitors, so.
Yeah.
And it is, there is a fee to that as well.
For the solicitors?
Yes. It's $500.
Seriously?
Yes.
Don't you think we should give them some kind of a piece of paper or something that they can show to the resident that I am legitimate and I've checked in with your police department?
Well, my only, my only comment on that is, even if we do give them a piece of paper, there's a lot out there with fraudulent pieces of paper. We still want to run through our database and make sure they're legit.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So to me, that's just kind of...
Yeah, I'm just kind of thinking, you know, elderly people going to the front door, and then there's somebody coming in the back door, they don't have time to call.
Well, if someone goes to the front door and has an ID, I still want them to call because that could be a fraudulent ID, and if they're really good, then, you know, they've laminated them. I mean, we've seen some very professional IDs. That's why we would rather them call us so we can check them out, because even though they do have an ID, and I look at it the other way, they might let them in the house and say, well, the Peoria Heights gives us this ID, I just think it's...
Yeah, that's true.
So that's my mindset behind it. I'd rather be right in the middle of it and make sure that, but we've seen a, and you know what the area we're probably talking about, we've seen an increase in activity in the northwest part of the town, so we kind of know where it's coming from, so anyway. Just wanted to make the residents aware.
Yeah.
Well, and if anyone has any concerns, please call Village Hall or the Police Department right away. We'll be right on on. Anyone else on police?
Here, let's go. Please come in.
Okay. All right. Building and property maintenance, anything there, Dustin?
No, I have nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Trustee Reiker, fire?
Um, no, I have nothing from the fire department. Thank you.
And on to public works. Trustee Harn is absent. Gentlemen, anything you, I know you have some things on the agenda, but anything else you want to update us on tonight? If so, please come up. Dave and Mike?
Yeah, I got a spray patch and a seal code getting ready to do. Just for all the drivers and the Heights residents, we're starting out here, or we did yesterday, is doing the spray patch. They got probably three-quarter way done, they got a little bit more to go. There is a little tar and rockin' valve, but it's packing in greatly now, plus it rained, so we will sweep it after two to three days, once it settles in, so. And we will get it off the sidewalk, so if everybody can bear with us and, you know, once we get done, so they should be back the next couple of days, so.
Thank you.
What that does, the spray patch does, it levels out the road, any potholes or anything like that, gives you longevity. If we come back seal code next year and that's approved, probably another five, six years, so it does its deal. It's a good deal. We've done it on the side streets. It's four lanes out here, so it looks more like a bubble gum machine out there, whatever, you know, so. But just bear with us, and it's settling in now. I mean, everybody's probably drove on it here. Dustin, you have anything?
No, just, I've only received one complaint.
One?
As far as the rocks. I know that it's just a short-term inconvenience. I think long-term is best for the road and the community, so, but as far as the next couple of days, just bear with us, like superintendent Casey said.
We'll get swept up and it's going to be good. And Thursday morning, if the weather holds out, if, you know, it rains, so I don't know now, but Thursday morning, we're going to start seal coating over here on Kingman. I'll give you a list of the, Lakeside, Euclid, Highland, Belmont, and Kingman. And the side streets there are Park, Claridin, and Bellevue. And so Thursday morning, and we put the signs up today, so it kind of gives the residents, hey, no parking, two days prior, so. And plus, there's cars that we know might be troubling to move, we'll go contact them tomorrow and catch them home and tell them that we're getting ready to seal coat, and it shouldn't take, they said maybe one day, maybe a day and a half at the most, so, but soon as we, soon as they seal coat it and they run the rollers over and stuff and get it binded to the pavement, we pull in a parking sign, so. But we just ask people not to spin their tires or turn on a real, real sharp turn, so it'll take it off, but it's good to go once they get it rolled and stuff, so. So inconvenienced, no parking for about a day, maybe a day and a half, then we should be good to go, so.
Okay, anything else, Mike?
Nope, that's about it, so we should be...
Any questions for superintendent Casey?
We get that done.
Thank you. Dave, can you give us an update, please?
We discovered a water main break this afternoon about 2 o'clock on Glen in the 1,000 block, about two blocks due west, so I wanted to let everybody know that sometime in the near future, hopefully end of this week or the early next week, there'll be a lane reduction going west on Glen. The Westbound Lane Glen will be, there'll be a lane reduction, and hope to have it back up and running by next Friday, because that's homecoming week, weekend with the parade and stuff, so you'll see that lane reduction on Glen. I'm not sure yet, maybe Thursday, Monday, somewhere in there, but...
Questions for superintendent Marfell? Thanks, Dave. Okay, administration and personnel, trustee Diane Mariscal.
Um, I do not have anything tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. All right, on to comments from the audience. Any comments from the audience? Julie, if you'd come forward, I know you have a report. You had a wonderful event here in Village Hall Sunday, so if you'd tell us about it, we're excited to learn.
Sure. How it went. Well, it does take a village, and I have a lot of thank yous, just because I couldn't have done it without quite a few people. And when we first started and I pitched the idea, the idea was to be able to showcase what the Heights has to offer and to help bring people who, homeowners, just bring people to the Peoria Heights. So when I started this, one very important part was you all. You approved to have the Village Hall open on Sunday, and the idea of that was to create a starting point, and all three banks in the Heights hopped on, no problem, sponsored the event. They were here with material to ask, answer questions, just to give out information. I also had two other vendors that I thought were really important in Heights. It's 1221 Duryea Apartments. They had material up and literature, and then the Kim Group had the Samuel Avenue Development and boards and had a chance to speak to people about that. So it's really trying to show every shape and form of living in the Heights. And then my table was basically, I handed out the brochure that we had that was designed by our very own Chris Chandler. He did a beautiful job, and it was a little bit of a moving target because obviously what's on the market today is not tomorrow, but kept it as current as we could. So we had homes ranging from a little under $50,000 all the way to a $1.1 million home. And so we had 18 homes. I would have had 19, but two days before, one was rented. So it was helpful. People stopped in here. I'd have to say the homes were open from 2 to 4, but the idea was to have Village Hall open from 1 to 5, so we didn't take away from the time for them to be in the home. And we had a good traffic. People trickled in, got brochures. They, it was a little bit slower during the 2 to 4, but we still had people stopping in for the brochure, which has the map on the back and placed it all. We did a lot of social media. We, I started out with Cheryl in The Heights Life, had an article, so that's the first thing that started it out. And then we had a wonderful donation. Peoria Heights Community Bank did a full-page ad of the event in something that's in every lobby of every building, the Central Illinois Homes Guide. So we got it out in a number of ways. There's probably a million other ways to do it, but everyone that gave me feedback at this point, still trickling in from agents, they were very appreciative and they would want to do it again. One agent was thrilled and said, "We got an offer that day." So good traffic, and I hope it reflected nicely on the Heights. Do you have any questions?
Is this going to be an annual event?
Oh, my gosh. Well, I'm going to recover first. No, no, we certainly can. I made, oh, well, there they are. I made yard signs for the events that each agent could have so that the event was cohesive. And I made a point of not putting a date on it. I put a day and time, so if we want to do it again, we have, it's not an extra expense that next year. The one thing I'd like to improve is I was trying to figure out a way that people could come back to the Heights after the event, kind of draw them back here, and that allows time for, you know, the banks to answer more questions. But to be here and to appreciate what we have in the Heights, to stay and have dinner, to go shopping, to whatever. And my draw was I gave every agent a free tower pass to give to their, the guests visiting the open houses. I called it the Woodpecker Pass, and it's a one-day-only pass, and so I gave it out to all the agents, but unfortunately, it was closed on Sunday because of wasps. So I, and I guess that's getting treated, but, so my draw was not really act, I mean, I think you'll honor it at the end of the year, but I'd probably like to consider the back end of the event more if we do it another year, to figure out a way that we could, I don't know, have some more fun in the Heights.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
For doing that, because I had a lot of people tell me they were excited to know that this was happening, and they wanted more information, and so, you know, I passed along that flyer.
Thank you.
That Sarah had sent to us, so, yeah, there was a lot of people that were very excited about what you were doing, so thank you for thinking of that and doing it.
Well, I was thrilled to do it, so it was, yeah, I'm open for next year, I guess. Thanks.
Okay, we're still in our public comment. Anyone else want to make a comment? Going once, going twice, public comments closed. Move on to old business. Any old business to come before the board? If not, on to new business. The first is a request for approval for final payout to T Corp. in the amount of $30,820 for water tower completion. Could I get a motion to approve that?
So...
Motion by trustee Gett.
Second.
Second by trustee Reiker. Dave, would you explain what we're doing here?
So the water tower improvement project is complete. There is three towers that were upgraded or had some improvements to them. On your packet, pages 2 and 3 have the scope of work that was completed for each tower. This final payment due, or request is from T Corp. in the amount of $30,820. The original contract was for $668, $650, so it came in $28,310 less than originally planned, which is always good. And this pay request and all other payments for this project were financed and paid from the loan. It says $1,850,000. The actual amount was 1.5 million. That was my error, and that loan was approved in 2016, so this, this last payment and all other payments for this project are funded out of that loan.
Okay, questions? Explain that, great, thank you. All right.
So what is left from that loan now? That we have, we have other things?
Good question. You're one step ahead of me. Yes, it's a, there's approximately $160,000 left, and next Tuesday night at the departmental meeting, I'll have a breakdown of what has been funded with that $1.5 million. That'll be next Tuesday, yep.
Okay, anyone else? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reiker.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next is a request for approval to perform cleaning and televising of storm sewers and culverts within the vicinity of the Rock Island Trail, not to exceed $8,000. May I have a motion to approve that, please?
I make the motion.
I have a motion by trustee Reiker, second by trustee Gett. Mr. Casey?
Yeah, we've been working over there by Dee's Autobody, which the property we own is a mid culvert, about four foot in diameter, three to four foot, and we need to televise it and clean it out and see if we can line it, which would be the cheaper route. So that's one reason we want to do that over there, so. And the big deal is the trail is eroding, and I think we might have found the problem, but not sure, so we need to televise and clean out the pipe underneath the trail, too, because it's probably about, what'd you say, a foot and a half out from the edge now, so we got a fence around it, so I'm thinking we get, I think that one's probably okay. It's a steel four-foot pipe, about two inches thick, but we don't know for sure, so to get the Dee's one and that one, I'd say it shouldn't cost 8,000, but I think up to 8,000 for her to do that, so we should be good to go, and the pipe and the property we own by Dee's, if that needs to be done, that would be a cheap, cheap route to go to line it, so hopefully that one's good and don't have a big hole in it somewhere, so.
Yeah, this is the same thing we discussed at committee down there last meeting, so it's just up for approval.
Any discussion or questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reiker.
Aye.
All right, you may stay right there, Mike. Next is a request for approval for payment to CNG Concrete in the amount of $2,900 for Galena Road sidewalk patches. I'd ask for a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
You got a motion, a second, and a second by trustee Gett. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, down, I don't care, remember the name of the building, it's the Camel Building there, 4,000 block. We had a big water main break and had to take about 30 foot of sidewalk out, so I went out and talked to CNG and that, and to get it up to state standards and all that, so I feel more comfortable using them instead of us doing our patchwork, so that way if state did come down, we were doing something, they'd beep, stop, you know, so. CNG does it up to state standards, and I got one little piece, four by four, that it needs to be done by BFL Park, so that's all included in that, so. And we already cleaned most of it out, saved a lot of money on that end of it, so. But once that's done, it'll be done, we'll be back to normal, so down on Galena Road.
Questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Dan Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Reiker.
Aye.
Okay, next is recommendation of acceptance of waste disposal, recycling request for proposal to GNO disposable. Trustee Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of GNO.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gett. Okay, Diane, would you like to start?
Um, we, everybody should have received the email from Mark showing the kind of easier version of it, I think, where it was all broke down as to the different proposals that he had received for waste pickup and then also recycling and then with them together. And then I believe trustee Carter had asked for the full proposals, which you did send out, and we all had a chance to look at those. Going with GNO, I believe, is going to save us about $60,000.
Yes.
So did anybody have any questions for Mark about going with GNO or any reason why they wouldn't want to or would want to go with something?
Well, they're the lowest responsible bidder, and I want to congratulate both Mark and Dustin for all the work they went through, because these bids were somewhat complicated. But the success story here is I think we were tempted because of the service we had with GNO simply to renew that contract, but by going out, we got some other very good companies that gave us bids, but it, in the long run, this saved us a lot of money, so I think it's a huge success story for the village and the taxpayers, and it was a good process to go through. It was time-consuming, but Mark, I interrupted, you go right ahead.
Oh, no, 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 thank you, mayor. I just wanted to say, so the process, the way this will work, I'll, you know, obviously they put the bid together, so the price is all there. I'm just going to utilize a similar form of contract to what we already have with them. There's no reason to reinvent it. Obviously, we need to add recycling and pin everything down, all the levels of service, you know, the, you know, the waste is once a week, the yard and landscape waste is every other week in the season. I think it's April through November, and we'll pin all that down in a contract, and we'll be back in front of you for final approval on the, on the new agreement.
I think one of the things that, when I was looking at that, it was, was it based on 2,200 residents?
2,500.
2,500, and is that about what we have? I mean, for homes?
That's a ballpark. I wish, Dave, can you?
Water meters, we have like 2,500.
That's about right. It's for households, not residents, correct?
About 2,500.
Okay.
2,500.
And then, and well, and again, the businesses pay for their own collections, so that may be a little lower than 2,500 if that's, am I right? The number of households may be lower than 2,500?
Yeah, that's, that is something I will need to pin down and verify. Right now, they pay a fixed amount per month, and I assume they're going to continue to pay...
2,475 is the last number ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
So my approach is going to be the price they bid is what the contract's going to reflect, and they, they should know how many homes there are, because they've been doing it for a long time.
Doing it forever.
So does it appear like they're going to still continue to have the same type of service? Because I always thought they were really good. I mean, it didn't matter what you put out there, they picked up.
Boy, I mean, I can't imagine that their service would change for any reason. I mean, we don't know how they handle recycle, you know, what type of carton, you know, containers they're going to provide and things, you know, so there's, there's a few details like that to work out, but, you know, in terms of the price, we, you know, the big battle is over, so.
So when's this going to switch over? So Eagle's not going to be picking up our recycle, correct?
After the end of the year, correct. It goes all the way through, basically...
And now, because with Eagle right now, you're allowed to have as many containers as you want. They just supply them, and I use two.
Right.
Okay? Because I got a large family, okay?
Sure.
Us Gets are good Catholic people, and we procreated. So all I want to know is, are we going to have to pay for containers? Are they going to give us the same thing that Eagle did? Eagle supplied the containers.
Right.
Which was a big selling point.
The owners out there, the...
Oh, well, I'm here again. Mayor, can we have them come up?
Gary, come on up.
Because that was, that was a big selling point for me to get people...
Gary, I'm sorry. My eyes, I didn't recognize you out there.
But anyhow, that was a big selling point for me to talk my neighbors into...
Yes.
Participating in recycling is, is not gonna cost you anything. Let's go ahead and you guys go ahead and, you know, get these containers. But a lot of people, if you charge them 50 cents, they're not gonna do it. I mean, they're real tight. And I'm just curious, because as I said, it was a big selling point to get my neighbors, who don't recycle normally, but they did, they have. And I said, "Just put the thing right out there. It don't cost you anything." And, I mean, it cut my garbage cans down from four a week to two at most because of the recycle and everything.
Actually, the recycling won't change from the way it is now. It'll be multiple things in there. That's the way the bid read. And we will provide containers just the same. They will be the same-sized containers. And if people want multiple ones, we have no problem with that. We'll probably deliver one to every residence. And then if they want an additional one, then they can call us and we'll bring it to them. I mean, it actually saves on the refuse that we're picking up, which costs us twice as much. I mean, you know, it's some money saving for us also.
Oh, like I said, it's cut down my garbage. I would have, especially at Christmas time, four to six garbage cans out there. Now, at most, at the very most, and this is really strong, it'd be, I would have, I have a third one I have, I hold back, but very seldom. And I, the recycling is the big reason I don't have all that garbage going out there. And, you know, it's nice to, especially, I said, around Christmas time, I got a lot of boxes that I need to get rid of, and I don't feel like burning.
Right, right. That shouldn't really change. It should be the same.
So, will you give us, like, instructions on the things we can put in?
It'll be right on the top. It'll be on the lid of it. I don't know if Eagles are that way or not.
Yeah.
But it'll have a list on the lid of accepted items.
Mine's kinda wore off.
Well, they, they give us handouts and stuff, and I'd have to ask my wife. She runs everything.
I would love to recycle. I just don't know what you can and can't recycle. So, yeah, that would be really nice to know that or have you let us know or...
I will. We can provide that, yes. I mean, it's basically the same wherever you go.
So, let me get this straight. Are the citizens going to have the option to do either garbage and recycling or garbage and no recycling, or we're gonna vote and you're gonna do garbage and recycling?
My understanding is we're gonna do the contract for both.
Both, okay.
Now, we can't make people recycle, but they're gonna have a recycled container.
Everyone has the option to participate.
Right, right.
Okay.
Really, nothing changes, other than...
No.
We're doing business now with, with Gary on both recycling and...
Correct.
Waste collection.
Right, right.
Gary, I, I wanna say, I, as mayor, I occasionally get some calls of people calling up that have issues or complaints. I have never received a complaint about your, your company or your service. In fact, you wouldn't think people would call to compliment, but I got a call last week from Stephanie McCumber who called, and I've gotten several people who tell me about your fine service. And you should be proud, because your dad would be very proud as the company has evolved. And thanks so much for the fine service.
Thank you. I'm, we wanna keep it that way. So...
But we felt we had to go out and test the market, and I think it was a win-win for everyone. I, I hope you're happy. And Mark, you'll begin.
Okay, that's fine. We'll make it work. That's fine. Okay?
Well, I'm glad you got it, because...
Well, thank you.
You've been do, you guys have been doing this, like I said, forever, as long as I can remember.
Over 40.
And, you know, sometimes it just doesn't work that well. But, yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Just let me know.
Can you wait around after the meeting? I wanna talk to you.
Yeah, we need to. We made a motion in a second.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
My other question on this was, I know that to try to make up some of the money for this year, we were gonna put these on the water bills. Are we still planning to do that or not?
They're, they're on the water bills now.
I thought we already passed that.
I guess I haven't received a water bill yet, so I don't, I didn't notice that it was on there.
Oh, it's coming. I just paid the last one. So, yeah, it's coming on the next one. So, yeah, I know we voted that through.
All right, anyone else? All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next is the appointment of Kevin Shields to the Business District Advisory Committee. I'd ask for a motion to approve that. And do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Who are the two individuals who vacated their positions out of curiosity?
I, well, Sarah could be able to, out of being too busy, I believe. But go ahead, Sarah.
It's Troy from TNT's and Bridget from Marvellous Salon.
Okay, thank you.
They just, they didn't have the time. Trustee Mariscal is what they told us to serve on this committee. So, Mr. Shields agreed to serve. And I'm still open to appoint anyone in the BDD that has a business. If anyone would like to serve there, we will, we will appoint them.
Thank you.
All right, madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Okay, next we would be at Resolution 2018-8, a resolution approving the sale of 4804 Ellen Court. So, trustee Diane Mariscal, I'd ask for a motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-08.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. Okay, go ahead, trustee Mariscal.
Um, this was, I, we discussed this last time. This was, I believe, the lady that, didn't her family own this property?
Correct.
Prior. And this is a vacant property that she has agreed to pay 80%, which was $4,800.
Correct.
For this property. It looks like, have you made a change to the bottom here?
Her attorney requested a clarification on the right of the village to buy the property back from her if she doesn't start construction within a year. And it's just a clarification. As long as she's moving diligently, if something happens, you know, weather or something like that, then we're not gonna snatch it back from her with the house half-built. I 'm sure that we wouldn't do that, but being an attorney, you wanted it in, in the contract.
Sure. And that's her intention, then, is to build a home on this?
Yes.
Property?
It's gonna be a deed restriction that she has to do that. So...
Okay.
Well, this may seem small, but to me, this is very significant, because another person who grew up here wanting to move back to Puria Heights, the Farnie family, Deb Farnie will be purchasing this property. We heard how Julie's reported earlier, that there was a great level of interest, people wanting to move back here. So, this is exciting. It'll be a family home, and that's been vacant. So, it's, it's great news. Anyone else? Madam clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. Next would be at the Treasurers Report. Would you read that, please?
Yes. The total balance for the Village of Puria Heights account is $1,717,678.57. The total of, the total balance in the Puria Heights Water Works account is $632,125.18.
Okay, you've heard the Treasurers Report. I would ask for a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the Treasurers' report.
I have a motion by trustee Riker.
Second.
Second by trustee Mariscal, I guess that was.
No, that was Jeff.
Trustee Gett. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions on the Treasurers' Report? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Gett.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Aye.
Trustee Riker.
Aye.
Okay, one final piece. We do have an executive session. We will, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for Personnel 5.
I'd like to make a motion to table this executive session until, well, I guess the next meeting, until we have all trustees present.
I'm okay with that. Then, counsel, would we rather just have a vote not to go into executive session? Or do, I don't like the idea of tabling, then we have to pull it off the table.
Right, right. Let's just vote it down.
Okay. So, if I could get a motion to go into executive session, if you don't think we need it, then just vote no, right, counsel?
Exactly.
Is that okay with you, Dan?
Yeah, that's...
Okay. So, would you give me the motion to go into executive session for Personnel 5, ILCS 120/2C1?
I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session in regards to personnel.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Dan, go, go ahead. You remake your comments, if you would, please.
Yeah, as I said previously, I would just like to wait to enter into executive session until next meeting, when hopefully we have all of the trustees present.
Okay, makes sense to me.
Um, we won't have all the trustees present, though. I won't be here for two, two meetings.
Yeah, that's, I understand what you're doing, but then we, inconvenienced the people who are actually here tonight.
Right, right. And I'm not saying postpone it for me. I'm just letting you know.
Okay. All right, I think we all understand. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Trustee Gett.
Nay.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Nay.
Trustee Diane Mariscal.
Nay.
And trustee Riker.
Nay.
Okay.
Okay, so, then trustee Gett, I'm looking down to you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I do. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we're adjourned.
I'll send you an email, let me know when I'm gonna be gone, so that you have it.
Sounds good.